Matthew Oliver here from House of Oliver. Thank you so much for joining us for our YouTube. If you are finding us through anywhere else, stop what you're doing. Go to our YouTube channel, House of Oliver. Like it, follow it, be our friend, share us, leave a very happy comment on there. Despite what you think about wine or food or politics, you can still love to hang out and spend a little bit of your day with us. I'm sitting here with the one and only Joe Patterson. How are you doing, sir?
I'm doing great. Never been better. Best day of my life.
Oh, well, this one is because you're live. So we literally just met officially and we've been in circles. We've connected. We've kind of brushed shoulders, but we connected, connected about 10 minutes ago.
Yeah.
Right before this table.
Yep.
Which is wild because I was, Kevin, Kylie and I were talking and we met at this table. Even though we had done things in life and circles, but it was about two years ago doing an interview right here. Then I first met him and now we're closest buddies. But so anyways, this could be the start of a great friendship.
Hey, good things start here, you know?
That's exactly right. So the reason you're here is one, you are on the Rockland City Council.
Correct.
And I live in Rockland.
Yeah.
So what are you doing?
Yeah, exactly.
I love living in Rockland. I don't have a negative thing, but Rockland's a little slow. Like, you know, you've got Roseville. Let's say you go Roseville, Rockland, Loomis. Roseville's kind of got, you know, you go to their city office, you know, it's all, you know, dialed in stuff. Rockland, we're a little more country.
Mm hmm. Yeah. I mean, you know, I think many years. Well, you know, I'm a young guy. I'm looking for something to do too, right? I mean, places to go get wine or whatnot, you know, we have, we have a lot of those places now, but you know, decades ago, Rockland decided it was going to be a bedroom community, you know, for families and, and things like that. And that's great. But you know, when you have young families move in, you gotta have something for young families to do, right? Especially because, you know, keeping that relationship with your spouse is what keeps a family together. And so there's got to be something to do and you want to do it in town, right? So.
Well, and I feel like the Rockland City Office is, is kind of on the outskirts of Rockland. Like they're way over here, but the rest of Rockland is sprawling. I mean, and I live on that side. So I call it, I always live on the other side of the tracks in Rockland. I live on, you know, the different side and all of people are always shocked like, that's still Rockland? Yes. I'm annexed in a little bit, but if I ever call the police, they ain't coming. They're like, we don't want to go out there. That's a weird part.
Maybe it's, is it just you or is it, you know, your neighbors too?
Thanks for asking. They leave me alone. But no, Rockland's done a lot of good things. I mean, it's grown. It's developed. I think you have a lot to, you know, kind of put under your belt and we did this and that's going to make you feel good.
Well, it's one of the fastest growing cities. I think in my opinion, you know, I, I believe I represent, you know, people coming to Rockland, like I said, young families and things. It's a very historic town, you know, it's been around forever. I mean, the Rukelas, you know, founded on those granite mines. You know, but now, you know, our predecessors created such an amazing place to live that it's a desirable community. And that goes for all of Placer County, right? So, so now we, you know, we have to adjust to that, to that, you know, that idea. And I think I, I represent a lot of families who are concerned about, um, you know, schools, quality of schools, um, you know, just safety. I mean, safety is a big one. Why do people move to Rockland? Schools and safety, right? And so, and same again with a lot of other Placer County communities.
The parks are awesome.
Parks are amazing, you know? And you know, our goal is to have one within walking distance to every single person's house in Rockland.
What do you, you look like a healthy guy. What's walking distance to you? Cause walking distance to you, I guarantee you, is not walking distance to me.
Well, it's supposed to be half a mile.
Oh, yeah. We could do that. We could rock that. Okay. So, uh, what got you into politics? Cause I mean, you have a family.
Yeah.
You have kids.
Yeah.
You had a life at one point. Why are you, why did you give it all up to go into politics?
Well, you know, I've worked in politics my whole life. I mean, you know, I restarted the College Republicans at Sac State and we grew it hundreds of people. And then I went and worked on campaigns and worked for Governor Schwarzenegger's campaigns, worked in the legislature for years. And so it's always kind of been an interest of mine. Um, but when I moved to Rockland, I had zero interest in getting involved.
But, but not like a career, interest, but not a career or?
Well, it was a career and then I started my own business, right? And so I was doing my own things, but.
You're just a glutton for punishment. I love this.
It is bad, you know? And I just paid my last quarterly tax payment, by the way, yesterday. Man, that was, that was tough. But you know, there was a proposal right across the street from Whitney High School. This is what got me involved, to put in a lockdown psychiatric facility. Like we all know, we need more mental health services. I mean, for people recovering from alcohol, I mean, my wife.
Big issue.
It's a big issue. You know, my wife was actually in the middle of postpartum depression during this time. I mean, we, and there are no services out there for women with postpartum depression. So, but there was this proposal to put in a lockdown psychiatric hospital from some company from like Tennessee.
Totally, which is totally different. A lockdown psychiatric hospital is different than a postpartum helping.
Yes.
I just, I mean, a little bit extreme. I mean, maybe, you know, there's sometimes I should be locked up, but I don't want to talk.
Well, you need both, you know? I mean, fact is people have crises in their life, right? But you know, right across the street from the high school. And so, you know, we started doing some investigations and stuff like that. And we learned that the school district hadn't been notified at all. They didn't even know.
Like investigations, like, um, you got like a magnifying glass and you threw on your?
Detective Google, you know? So, you know, we learned about it and it was already set for hearing. And the only reason why we knew about, this is actually an important point. Somebody drove by a sign about this big on the property that said, public notice, call this number, public hearing, call this number. So this resident called, um, called the phone number and they said, hey, this is what's going in. And so, anyways, long story short, we obviously sort of, we defeated that, but the point is, we needed more transparency in town. So people knew what was happening in their community. And so my entire purpose for running in 2016 was to bring that to the city, you know? And we've done a lot. I mean, I don't want to bore you with all those details, but you can go online right now and find out every development proposal that's occurring in Rockland. It's available. You can get email notifications if somebody comes in. So you know what's going on.
Stop getting those email notifications.
Unsubscribe. Let me know. I'll take care of it. So.
No, it's, it's, I, I have as a member, a part of Rockland really have appreciated. And actually, haven't felt the need to get too involved because I feel like you guys have done such a great job. I do have a question. And I will put all the blame solely on you, um, as a city council member, because it happened under your watch. But what is the deal with this ropes course? Like how much more money is Rockland going to spend giving it to this ropes course? I'm just curious.
Hey, you know, that is a great question, you know? So actually I was, uh, the lone no vote on the overruns for that.
Okay.
But you know, just to sort of put.
Was everybody else like positive? Cause they're like, have you done a ropes course? They're so much fun and the fresh air and who needs money? And the city doesn't need to spend it on important things like water and I.
Well, I'll tell you, the council was sold a $3 million project and it ended up being a lot more expensive.
It's like this, uh, speed train to nowhere.
That's basically what it was like. And so when we got those over, you know, no, absolutely not. But I will say this. Uh, the, the park, all including all the amenities around it, it brings in about 30,000 people a year to the city of Rockland. And we're going to be doing beer gardens and all these things around it. That's going to help prop up businesses out there. So, but the $15 million it costs, including all the surrounding amenities, um, a park, any Whitney Park costs 15, you know, about $12 million at that time. But this is going to bring in 30,000 people and this year, uh, the city will make about, uh, about $600,000 back from that. So I mean, it's going to pay for itself over time. It took time to get there, right? But.
Well, and I think at some point, you never know when you're going to get swindled or when somebody's going to do something and not hold their word. Or we always know that. But anyway, so you had already invested money. So now it's either cut tail and run, or I guess we got to follow through.
Well, we knew it was going to, because this was about economic development. This wasn't about building a park. This was about bringing, so we would never have to raise taxes, right? I mean, that's one of the components. Cities have to get creative on how, we are one of the only cities in Placer County with no additional sales tax increase. I mean, you know this from running your businesses, right? We don't have that and we don't want that. And so the point is, let's generate revenue in creative ways. Yes, it was a bumpy road and it was way more expensive than, then that's why I voted against it. But at the end of the day, it's now generating revenue to not only pay for itself. That's the thing. Doesn't only pay for itself, but it's bringing additional 600,000. That could pay for several new police officers a year.
Yeah.
Right? So it's, it's not chump change, you know?
And you guys, um, you're, you're talking about a beer garden. Any ideas for a wine garden? I happen to know people who are kind of into that.
Well, yeah. Hey, I say, let's, let's do it. I mean, I love.
I'm just waiting for my phone to ring. So.
So I could, I could, actually, I mean, this was in a public meeting, but you know, uh, Sack Yard Tap, Tap House in Sacramento.
Okay.
It's kind of a, uh, you know, beer carton kind of concept where you go in there, you can bring your dogs in. And so, again, this wasn't really about the city making money, but it's, it's supposed to bring in tens of thousands of people a year.
Yeah.
To, to spend money and, and spend tax dollars in Rockland. And we don't have to raise taxes.
Well, and, and the previous management of the ropes course, they were kind of a disarray. But you've guys got a new team in there. They're doing the job. I've heard from people, they've gone, they love it.
That's great.
Um, I have yet to go because I'm ropes adverse. I was in like Boy Scouts. So I'm, I don't want to have to mess with any more ropes.
Yeah. I mean, this is a top quality team. They did the, uh, I think it's the Boy Scouts of America, sort of national ropes course. But it's, these guys know and women know what they're doing and it's, uh, I don't really hear complaints about it, honestly, you know?
One of the things I'm really pumped about is if I'm correct and we'll delete this if I'm not. Um, Rockland just hired a new police chief.
Correct.
Mr. Banks. Is that correct? Mr. Banks? And I'm really pumped about this. I feel we've already had good, we were good on safety. But I think you guys have made a big statement, bringing in such a, a really good qualified, solid police chief in the Rockland.
We are lucky to have him. He's, he's local. He's, he's from this area. He understands the culture of Placer County, knowing how to police. And by the way, knowing that our community here in Placer County is very friendly towards police.
Yeah.
You know, we support our police and, but you know, they're, so for him being local, when you do an external hire, there's always, uh, you know, I mean, there's the new person coming into an existing department. So, but him understanding sort of what we're like in Placer County. I mean, I think we, we hit a home run. So.
I think you did too. And I think that that just continues to go towards you, our city council, you making good choices and helping develop a great community, which leads us to this. You're taking this foray into politics to really the next level. And I mean, this is a next level, big commitment. Um, again, you have a, a young family, you had a life, but now you're going all the way and you are running for Assembly District?
Five.
Five. Yeah. This is, uh, where Kevin Kylie was. Now Kevin Kylie's running for Congress. You're running for his Assembly District.
Correct.
It's a big leap. What, what made, did you just wake up one morning and go, I have to do this?
Well, you know, I used to work in the Capitol, right? And it just, uh, I didn't really have an interest because you know, I have young kids, right? But I talked with some, um, other legislators like, uh, Assemblyman James Gallagher, who has five kids and, you know, is a friend of him, has endorsed my campaign.
Wow.
And I said, hey, is this possible? And he said, hey, you're going to be able to drive home every night. Because the most important thing to me, and I got emotional yesterday talking to another pastor about this, is that I don't want to wake up 12 years from now and my kids not remember me, you know? And so, you know, I get anxiety. I honestly, this is, I don't know who's going to watch this, but I, I lose, hopefully everybody. But you know, I, I honest to God lose sleep over things that maybe I didn't give my kids enough attention that day. And so I had to really struggle and think about that. But you know, there, you know, so after I got past that fact that I would be able to be a successful father and do this job at the same time, you know, I thought about a, a lot of the problems that we have, you know, in California. We know about them. And we've heard Kevin Kylie talk about them a lot and James Gallagher and, you know, and I think I'm going to be, like James said in his endorsement yesterday, that I'm going to be the person to take on the governor and be effective at doing it. I can communicate. I have relationships with people. And you know, it's time we, you know, I mean, we've always had, Kevin, Kevin did a lot of this, but we, we have to stop this tyranny. It is crazy. And you know what? There's two reasons why I'm running. To maintain our quality of life here. And there are a lot of things underneath that that I can go into detail on. But also just liberty. You know, this campaign isn't about, you know, um, vaccines and masks, or it's not about, you know, public safety specifically. This is about the liberty for you to be able to make your own medical decisions for your family. This is about the liberty to protect yourselves when danger comes. So that's what I'm running on.
Which I know, I, I mean, there's so many things I want to ask you. I'm so excited. Um, because we've not asked any of these questions and we're just meeting for the very first time. Uh, Kevin's a good friend.
Yeah.
Been able to, when need be, call him up on the phone and say, hey, what, what's going on? Um, not only a good friend, a good leader and representation, which is why I'm excited that he's taking things to the next level. It scares me because whoever's coming in, I don't know them and I, I need to know them. So what are you doing later this afternoon? I mean, um, what, you know, I, so I think these are important things for me in the restaurant community and for small businesses. Kevin fought on our behalf. Um, one, are you going to be accessible? Like can people, you, you see Kevin at everything. Um, are you going to be somebody who's going to be accessible and they're on boots on the ground with the people?
Well, I think that's, that's what I pride myself in doing is being, I think one of the, if not the most, one of the most accessible individuals in, my cell phones online, Google it. And every single resident.
Can we, can we Google that cellphone number?
916-833-0787.
Woo, you heard it here first.
But the, every single resident, when I'm elected, 500,000 residents in this district can call me personally if they have an issue. And I want to hear from businesses because I want to get involved. And you know, I got calls, there are businesses in Rockland and I don't want to, to take liberty and, and, and talk about their issues now. But they would call me during the pandemic, you know, the shutdowns and all those things. And say, I'm afraid that the government is going to close me down, you know? And don't worry about it. I, we are not going to shut you down. You need to operate. You know, they called me personally. They will give those testimonies about me. But the point is, they could call me. And if there's an issue in this district, I want to hear from the residents and the businesses directly. And I will always be accessible. My phone number will always be available.
Yeah.
And yeah, I will be the boots on the ground. And that's what I've been doing, you know, in my pod here in Rockland. I'm just going to expand a little bit more.
Well, it's kind of exciting. Uh, one, there are a lot of, a lot, there are a few people running for this position.
Yeah.
And, um, I've had a lot of phone calls, people asking me questions. And in fact, I wanted to make an announcement right here and now. I am not running for anything. I don't want to run. I don't even want to run in the morning. I don't want to run at all. Yeah, no, I, I've got a lot of people ask me just where my sense is. And I'm going to tell you, I've done a little research on you. I've texted some people. That's, you will go Google and I just text around. And, uh, the rumor mill is especially within the restaurant community, a lot of support. Uh, they feel like you were accessible, that you did help give them assurances during this. So, but some of the questions I know that these guys are going to want to know. Mask mandates, especially mask mandates for schools. Where do you stand?
I don't support mandates. I mean, you know, I do support choice. If people want to wear masks, they should be allowed to. And you know, we, we shouldn't, we shouldn't judge those people if they want to wear them. But I certainly don't support, um, any mandates. I mean, you know, I have four kids and two of them are in elementary school and they wear their masks. They get home, they're all, you know, nasty and stuff. And, um, you know, we're learning now that the utility, especially of these cloth masks are really, you know, slim. And you're telling me we're going to put an N95 mask on all these kids? It ain't happening, you know? So, so I don't support mandates, but you know, what the government needs to do is, is, people are the most, you are most vested in your own outcome. If you think there's a threat somewhere, you're not going to run towards the threat. And maybe if you're a cop or something like that, right? So you're going to make the decisions for you and your family that keep you safe much better than the government will ever do so.
Sure.
I wore a mask for a while, you know? I, that's what the, you know, thing people were telling you to do, right? But you look, you, you see now and you say, hey, look, you know, this isn't, why are we just, why is the government just telling us now, two years later?
Yeah.
Right? But at the same time, if your business as a business owner requests you to wear a mask.
Yeah.
You know, that's where it gets kind of, you know, interesting because it, it, those business owners also have liberty themselves, right? As business owners.
This whole time, man, if I go into a business and they say you need to wear a mask, you put a mask on. Or you make a choice not to go to that business.
Exactly.
I have no problem with it. I think the issue is, is, you know, I, I was looking back, we have a 2018 California Department of Health, uh, notice. And they're talking about the fires and N95 masks. And they were saying, don't wear the N95s for prolonged periods of time because it is adverse to your health. And they listed all these issues. And now they're turning around saying they're the only ones to wear. And you have to wear it all day, all the time, indoors, outdoors, on your own. I don't know. And, uh, it's, the government can't make up its mind on how they want to control us on any given day.
Exactly. And you know, when it comes to vaccines and stuff, hey, look, we have not reached 35% of people in this nation to get vaccinated. We're not reaching them by forcing things down their throat, right? We need to, if you want people to get vaccinated, that comes from within. That comes from a friend saying to a friend, hey, have you done this? I got vaccinated, whatever. But you got to leave it up to that person to make the decision. I mean, you're seeing cops leave all over, cops, firefighters, nurses, all these people leaving everywhere in the country, first line responders, because they don't want to get vaccinated. And so the right way to approach it is not to say, hey, you're mandated to do it. You know, and now you're seeing, we are at over a hundred cases, I think, in a seven day period in Placer County of vaccine, of positive tests for vaccinated individuals, you know? So I mean, it's, and I think it's about 180, maybe 200 for vaccinated or unvaccinated. But you're seeing a lot of transmission within the vaccinated. I'm not a doctor. I don't know. I just read the numbers.
Yeah, yeah. You actually are reading it.
I don't know what works and what doesn't work. All I know is that the government coming in and mandating it, it doesn't change your heart on what you're going to do.
So, um, when it comes to, I mean, again, so many questions. What, what is, what would be one of the biggest things that you feel needs to be tackled? Other than just the governor's absolute abuse and overreach and, uh, uh, of the constitution and impacting our lives? What are things that you want to jump right in and get to? And that you actually think you can make a difference on?
The number one thing that, I mean, I have a lot of things with electricity prices, the quality of life. Can I, can I? And I have fought that on Rockland. And if, if you Google Joe Patterson and electricity, you'll see. But, and I'll get into the quality of life.
How do we get out of PG&E in Rockland?
You know, it's, it's interesting because you kind of look at, you, you look at, well, do you want a government takeover, right? But then the government already controls everything PG&E does. This isn't only oddly, this isn't only PG&E's problem. This is the state's problem getting in their way of doing stuff.
But you know, I have a house literally a block away, a block away and they're Roseville Electric.
It's crazy.
And they pay half, half. Their house is bigger than mine and they pay half of what I do in electricity.
Okay. So when I was mayor of Rockland in 2019, I called on the city to purchase and annex the, um, PG&E's infrastructure and that, and then Roseville also, they're on record. This is in the paper, expressing interest in having conversations with us about operating it. So the issue is it could cost hundreds of millions of dollars, but when you roll out bonds over 40 years.
But just kind of like a rope spark. I mean, come on now.
Yeah, no.
Can we just do it?
Well, see, that's the thing. When you talk about what's the number one stressor right now on people, you know, trying to make ends meet? It's utility prices, gas prices, food prices. I mean, you have 7% inflation. PG&E is like 20, not PG, just electricity prices. Are 20 something percent inflation, you know, increases. So we got to do something about energy prices in, in just general and inflation, quality of life issues in Sacramento. The other main issue I want to work on, which is really important to me, is protecting the profession of our first responders. Police, fire, things like that. Because right now in Sacramento, there is such just almost disdain for police officers that go in there every day selflessly, selflessly, put their lives in jeopardy to protect us. There's a lot of disrespect out there for them, trying to take away their, um, their qual, their, their livelihood, you know, trying to take away their livelihood, but also, um, you know, changes in, in pension. You know, just make it more difficult to want to even be a police officer, right?
It's interesting to hear you say it because, you know, when you read, no one's talking about this. And I actually get it. My daughter wants to be a police officer despite everything that's gone on. And that we live in California and she, in fact, it was the riots taking place that my daughter said, I can make a difference. I need to be in there. I want to get involved. And in fact, because she's 18, she joined the army to get the training in all of this chaos, so that she can become a police officer in California. With that said, no one's talking about it. People are talking about water, you know, which is an issue. But, um, man, if we don't have police officers, if we don't have firemen, if we don't, and there aren't the people, you know, this year, with these fires that just ravaged our state, at the same time, no one asked the question, why we don't have enough firemen? And looked at the things that our governor has passed, that has absolutely affected being a first responder, being a fireman and, um, not just the forestry, not just firemen. And, um, and why we're in this situation. And not everybody has the money that he has to be able to hire private fire security to be able to go and protect his winery while half the state was burning down.
Well, and that's the thing, you might hear other, um, candidates potentially talk about Proposition 47, Prop 57, AB 109. Which by the way, when I worked in the legislature, I was the main staff person. We actually sued, it went to the US Supreme Court to try to stop the release of 60,000 inmates that caused all this stuff. So I'm very familiar with it. Everybody's going to support that. But the question is, do other people support the profession? You know, because if people don't want to be cops, I see it on the city level. It is hard for, now police officers have to work until they're 57 to get, you know, to retire out on that. And you know, who cares about that debate per se, but the more you add on and make it more difficult to be a police officer, your daughter is definitely, I think, going to be an outlier. But she was inspired by somebody. I know this for sure. Somebody inspired her and we need more people like that.
100%. So some big things to tackle. Um, right now you have endorsement, you said James Gallagher, which I think is a, is a huge endorsement. Uh, I know speaking with Kevin, he hasn't endorsed anybody yet because, um, much like me, he knows a couple of the people running. It's like, oh no, what do we do? I told him, I said, it's like picking my favorite child, which I do sometimes. Um, but, um, who else has gotten behind you?
Um, well, uh, last night I received the support of, um, of Senator Jim Nielsen, who represents Roseville, uh, in the, and he's also, you know, solid conservative. Uh, the mayors of, uh, Bill Halden, the mayor of Rockland, um, Hollywood's Andrea F., the mayor of Lincoln.
Yep.
Um, you know, it's only 10 days deep into the campaign, right? So I have several, uh, school board members that are going to support me like Pete and Julie Coniston, uh, from Roseville.
Sure.
Um, also Tiffany, uh, from Rockland, Rochelle from Rockland, Julie from Rockland.
And these are all, I like, your list is all troublemakers. Like these are the troublemakers. And I say that in the utmost respect and honor of them because
Exactly.
they've gone out there, they've disrupted the status quo and they have helped fight when no one else would. And they weren't professional politicians. They're moms and dads and people going, we've got to make a difference, much like you. How can I make a difference in my community?
Well, and that's, you know, see, the thing is, is, you know, obviously you've been involved in a lot of the statewide rallies and things like that. My goal in the last few years was laser, I took my kids out of Rockland schools.
Wow.
I took my kid, I was so disappointed by the shutdowns and at that time, the board's, uh, you know, inability to reopen schools. I took my kids out of Rockland school, some of the best in the state, because I need, my kids needed in-person education.
Yeah.
And then what I did is I helped support all of their campaigns. I did, uh, most of Tiffany's social media campaign.
Oh, wow.
And I did mailers for them, uh, all volunteer. And I also contributed money to them because not only my life livelihood was at stake, but my community's livelihood. So I'm a boots on the ground guy. To, and you can see the results of what's happened in Rockland. They just came out with a resolution, standing up to the governor. And that is a direct result, not for me. I mean, they're, A, on their own, they got elected on their own. I participated in that process because they are top quality troublemakers.
They are, they are. And that's why one of the things, you know, I have a three-year-old at home and I was looking at the future, which is part of the reason why we actually abandoned the whole California educational system and created liberty learning. So that students didn't have any of this critical race theory or any of this other nonsense. Much, forget masks and vaccines. We've got so much problems with our education, but I'm glad we have those kinds of troublemakers in there. And, uh, and they're endorsing you. So I think that's a big, that's a big statement. Okay. Let's ask really the only question that should have been asked today. Favorite winery in Placer County?
Oh, um, you know.
I didn't even ask if you drink wine.
Oh, yeah. No, we do.
You could be a whiskey drinker. You could be a water drinker.
I drink everything. Um, uh, you know, I do enjoy, uh, you know, a cocktail or a beer, a glass of wine. Just kind of depends on the environment.
Would you say like you're a novice or you?
Well, here's the thing, I'm from now. Well, here's the thing, I'm from Napa. So asking me a question like this is kind of crazy, but, um. Uh, you know, actually the, the name of the winery, the, it's on, it's actually on Rockland Road. Uh, Conte, or it's off Rockland Road, uh, off Front Street, I believe, but Conte.
Conte Avino.
Yeah.
Conte Avino Winery.
They have a great wine that my wi- my wife loves and I can't find it anywhere. I think it's, uh, Moscat. Uh, grapes.
Yeah, a muscat, uh, muscat.
Yeah, it's.
White wine?
Yeah, it's a very sweet wine.
Orgy kind of flavor to it.
I prefer red wine and they make excellent, but this one sort of brings me and my wife together, you know, and so.
Sweet. It's got residual sugar in it. I don't want to say it's like a Moscato. But, um, you know, it's a sweeter wine and it's, it's really nice and refreshing. So then you're from Napa. I didn't know this. Let's dig deeper.
Yes.
Um, then your favorite Napa winery. And now I will judge you harshly.
Oh, yeah.
This is like going intense.
You know, Alpha Omega is really good. Um, I like them. Uh, you know, it's better just to buy the bottle of wine. Because the, uh, the tastings are fifty to a hundred dollars each, right? Um, see, when I grew up in Napa, wine tasting was free. If you were from Napa.
Back in the wee days.
Yeah.
Back in the days.
Now it's, it's a, it's an experience, but you know, another, uh, my stepfather works at, uh, Sterling Vineyards.
Sure.
Which has been bought and changed hands a few times, but now they're going more towards smaller, smaller wines and smaller releases and things like that. But they also make a, uh, they also use that grape for a wine too. But you know, when you get to the top of the hills out there at Sterling and you have a. Nice crisp, uh, glass of, of white wine.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, and it's foggy and stuff. It's unbelievable, you know? So, but I mean, I'm a lover of, uh, you know, all wines. And depending, you know, for work, if I got to send wine, it's sort of, I try to figure out what they like and then I'll find a winery that's, that's based on that. We've all been to Duckhorn and, and things like that.
The nice thing though with Placer County is we have won so many wineries and it's growing.
No.
But our varietals are so different than Napa.
Yes.
Cause you know, Napa, it's big Chardonnay cab. Actually, I go to a winery in Placer County and they make a Chardonnay or cab. I go, what are you doing?
Yeah.
Stop. Um, because we do everything else. We can do a Savion Blanc so well. We can do, uh, um. You know, uh, Chenin Blanc, you got great Barbera, Sangiovese, uh, Zinfandel. Um, I mean, we've got the other varietals, the more Spanish style varietals that we can do and then blends. And I think. You know, people forget the fact that in wines, you know, Bordeaux blends, they were all blends, you know, and you would really know. You wouldn't know it because it was titled Merlot or Cab, but you would know it for the region and it would be a blend of whatever. And we've gotten away from that. We've gotten to just, uh, grape specific wines, but we're losing the inclusiveness. Where we, where we all just come together and blend those. But I love wine because I have had many a conversation with people that. We disagree on so much, but you open a bottle of wine and you come to a table. Now all of a sudden you find things you do agree on and you're able to talk and, and really connect. So, um, but yeah, growing up in Napa.
Well, you know, the thing is, is being out here and I've seen, I've been in Placer County now for about thirteen, fourteen years. And you've seen the explosion of the wineries and they don't, what I love about it is they're not trying to compete with the tourist destination of Napa, you know?
Sure.
That was Sonoma in Napa at the time. They're here focused on quality of wines and, you know, also the experience. That's another thing. You go to a lot of the wineries and they have, they sort of create an experience where, because again, they, they understand the quality of life. You can bring your kids to the winery and enjoy a glass of wine, you know, with your, with your spouse or, or whatnot.
We were, my wife and I, we were at Rancho Robo Vineyards not too long ago. And yes, we, we had our kids out there. They have this beautiful pond and stuff the kids can run around and play and people had their dogs.
Where's that one at?
That one is out in Lincoln, California.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's.
Is it sort of on that, you know, the, that trail or, you know?
Yeah, it is. It's out on the wine trail, but you know, you could do Wise Villa, Najjar. Um, you can do, uh, Donna De Cello, Rancho Robo, uh, Lone Buffalo. I mean, they're all out there. And then you have breweries out there too, like Dueling Dogs Brewery. And I mean, just some great, and then out in Lincoln Slice. And then if you're out at Oliver's, big sexy brewery, but you know, some great experiences. Which is what I think makes Placer County so amazing.
Yeah, I mean, you go to Napa, again, love it, but you know, you pay fifty, seventy-five bucks for a tasting, you're not bringing your kids.
Yeah.
You know, you are literally, uh, you are literally a tourist, you know? But here it's like, again, it's all about. It, it's just about producing the quality of wine and creating that experience where, where, where it supports the, the community really, you know, so.
Well, you're not bringing your kids yet, but they do grow up, by the way. They just, your kids eventually will be like, hey dad, I want you to take me to Napa, you know? It sounds like the grandfather working at Sterling. I mean, they're going to en- enjoy some taste. So how can people find out more about your campaign?
Sure. Well, joepatterson.com, that's P A T T E R S O N dot com. I already gave out my cellphone number, but, uh, you know, my email address is joe@jopatterson.com. So easy to send me a note.
And, uh, you're raising funds.
Yeah.
You're going to have probably some events and do some speeches and talks and.
Yeah, I'll have a, I'll have a lot of events, you know, I, for the, for anybody listening, obviously going to my events is not. You know, the important part per se, those are often, often to raise money and things, but to go to, you know, see me at community events or just call me. I mean, that's the thing, I pride myself, my bio says this, pride myself on being very accessible. So, you know, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, other than being accessible, if there's one thing you want to leave these guys with, because you know, they're, they're like me, you get a piece of paper. It comes in the mail. It's got names and sometimes photos of people. And you're like, I don't know anything about it. And you know, one guy's smearing that guy, that guy's smearing that guy. Um, that's why I think endorsements are cool because I'm looking for people, oh, I like him, he supports him. Yay.
Yeah.
Um, and for me, when I get a text message from, you know, one of my buddies in the industry and he's like, hey Matt. This is where my vote's going. And we just started. I'm like, hey, I haven't even talked to him. You know, I think that's kind of cool.
No.
Um, but what's one thing you want them to know about you? Like you got this opportunity, talk to the people. What is it?
Well, I, you know, the most important thing for me in running for this office is, and I've said this already, but is to protect our quality of life. Period. And there's a lot, there are a lot of things that, that that center's around, but if you, if you, if I'm standing in an elevator and people say. Why are you running? It's to protect our quality of life for families and businesses. Period.
All right. Well, hey, thank you for joining with me. You guys, uh, go in, if you haven't already, subscribe to our YouTube channel. Like this, share this, whatever platform and media you're seeing it on. And then check out other th- stuff we're doing, our live videos. Check out the restaurant, houseofoliver.com, oliversbrewhouseinggrill.com out in Lincoln. But no matter what, stay beautiful, stay lovely. You know how this goes until we drink together again. Cheers.